Let me know on your own.
That's different.
Yeah, they're not really anything that we participate in. That's just a group. That could be removed. It's under, under other.
Hey, welcome back, everybody. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is a decision discussion of assignment of Valley County Board of County Commissioners to committees and boards. And we have a giant list of lots of different boards that all of us are involved with. And normally this time of year, we sometimes trade around just so we can kind of learn other aspects of the county. So now would be the time if you want to make a change or do something different.
If I'm looking at our list, there's some things I would like to add and some things that we can clarify. So YCAP of Southwest Idaho, I would like to send them a letter of concern with some of the things that are our concerns for the county. And discuss what them are place on that board if, in fact, some of these things are not discussed and rectified. So I would, I will put that on a future agenda for a discussion item.
I think, Sherri, it might be advisable to not only to send them a letter, but maybe we could find out who their lead agency is on a national level or a regional level, whatever it is, and then maybe send them a letter as well. I don't know how to find that out, but.
The Cap Valley County, it must be YCAP Valley County. I've never been contacted by anyone. I have no knowledge of anyone else. And maybe I just need to put YCAP Valley County in there, but I've never been contacted by anybody. So I think we should stick that out for.
That was the group that was working. Like, there was a member from the city of McCall that was on there when I was on it. And then they started having problems getting quorum or even, you know, more than three people show up.
We just take that one off, maybe?
So we're going to take Cap Valley County off.
The Stednight Gold Collaborative. I honestly don't have time to engage in that one. So. Dave, do you have, are you still okay with that?
Yeah, and like I said, it's been, it's been pretty low key right now.
What is agency collaborative, you mean?
It's, yeah, it's now it's called the Stednight Gold.
Okay.
Forest Coalition, Dave, you're still on that one. Winter Rec Forum, you're still on that one. With Central Mountain CDC, this is not a good time for me to give that one up. We are changing our director and hiring that housing professional.
Are you guys, is it a pretty good group now?
It is, yes. EMS, LEPC 911, Elliot, you're still on that one.
Yeah, and we're meeting quarterly, just kind of like they said, you're really short, quick meetings. And the big emphasis is mainly right now is repeaters and trying to get those updated.
One of the boards, I think, wow, that went on the bottom. Central District Health Board, Elliot, you're still K O with that one?
Yep, and the Boise Forest Coalition, and then the RCND.
Chairman, I apologize, the Region Foremanal Health Board?
Oh, sorry, we are no longer on that.
So that can be removed?
That can be removed.
Thank you, sorry.
Oh, no worries. The Southwest RCND, that's the one that we have Mary Rosen going to, correct?
Yes.
So I'm going to put Mary on there. Maybe I should put grant writer on there instead of Mary specifically, just so that we know what position is on there. The Fair Board. So this year, the Fair Board is going to take a lot of energy. I don't know if anybody else has the energy to put behind that. But the things on the Fair Board we need to address this year is the vibrancy of the board itself. They are not, they're struggling to meet and find quorum. They need some new additional people on there. We need to identify the physical assets that the county owns there and what needs to be improved in that area. So there needs to be a lot of work done with buildings and grounds. And looking at those CIPs coming in. So there's definitely going to be some work there to engage with the Fair Board and improve and give them direction on open meeting laws and making that a little, making it function more like the Waterways Board does.
Are they still meeting monthly or do they kind of take the winter off?
They have struggled to meet. I have not attended a meeting since like last October. And I know that their, their director, if you will, if that's what she's called, it might just be secretary, has been trying to get them to meet. So there is going to be work there this year. Hearing nobody excited about that.
Not excited about that one.
Stay on that one. Community Gardens, Guardians.
That one, I've been on for, since Gordon left, and we've had one or maybe two cases since then. And the only reason that they're really on there is if they get into a financial need, they'll come to the county for a request for funds for someone that has had a assisted living or a long-term care facility that has no funds.
They haven't approved any of that, is that?
No, because with the folks that are in, been going in, have had their enough money to pay their own way, so to speak, but.
You're okay with staying on that?
Yeah, I don't mind staying on that one.
Waterways, Dave. Land Allocation Committee is Dave.
What exactly does that land allocation, is that a subcommittee of Payette Forest Coalition or what?
Similar, yeah. They haven't met in over a year. They haven't met since the beginning of COVID. So hasn't been anything going on with that.
All Bill Advisory Committee, Dave, still you. Eli, I need soil and water. I try and go when I can. It, it has been at the same time as the broadband group. So once that gets off my plate, I'll be back to the soil and water unless you would like to take that one.
Is really something I'm sure they've invited you to, but you don't really have to be involved in. Because that's more of a, kind of an extension kind of a thing.
Maybe we should put our grant writer on that one also, since she's attending the Resource and Conservation Board. And the reason I was going was the grant opportunities that are there to point over the county are pretty important.
So maybe that would be a good one for Mary.
We should see if Mary would be willing to cover that one, too.
So.
Except for she's on the broadband committee with me, and that meets at the same time. Just leave me on there, and if I can, I'll go.
You want to stay a minute? I was on it for 11 years or 13 years as a board member in it. It's okay, I guess.
The National Forest Counties and Schools Coalition, I still attend that. That's our SRS funding and PILL conversations. Magistrate, magistrate commission.
And that one, if you guys are interested, it's basically a process of interviewing attorneys for future District Four judges. And I've been doing it, I don't know how many years now. And if someone wants to do it, I would certainly step aside, and you would have to apply and be appointed by the governor. But you go to Boise for most of these interviews, although during Corona, we did a lot of the stuff online or through the mail. It's a lot of work, but you have a big influence on who becomes a district judge in our district. If no one wants to do it, I'll keep doing it.
I feel like I have enough on my plate right now to learn something else.
We'd have to trade some.
Yeah, we'd have to trade something. I don't know if you want to take on the fair, but.
Nope.
Leave that one until maybe the end. Maybe we can look at some of this other stuff. But Big Payette Lake Water Quality League, Dave, you're saying? Okay, let's take that one off.
Big Payette Water Quality is off.
However, okay, so the Waterways Collaborative Group, that's the one that is our planning.
Yeah, that's Logan Simpson.
You're on that one. Pathways Collaborative Group, that's still going on, right?
It is.
What about the Recycling Group? What is that?
They haven't met. There hasn't been a lot of stuff going on with that. You know, I think we just get periodic communications from them. Still interested in what our future plans are with the Recycling Center. And I think once we start looking at that again, then that'll be a great time to kind of get those folks engaged again. It's not an official group. It's more of a loose organization.
Other potential boards, the one that I think we need to add, that we need to, you know, be pushing to get into place is that Recreation Strategic Planning Group.
That, I was going to say, that is part of what's going on with United Payette right now. And I think with Memo of Understanding that we have with them, that'll be something that's going to get flushed out. They have a meeting on January 11th. It's kind of a Q and A about where they are and what's been going on.
Do you think that that is, though, the planning group that we would need at the county to set county priorities for recreation?
That's my hope. And that's a conversation that, you know, certainly I've talked to Larry about. And I think that part of the MOU made it seem like that was more specific to the IDL lands. But my hope was, was when we have this conversation with them is that, and it could have already taken place with the Recreation Director, I'm not sure, but that that would be more of an advisory committee that we keep for all of our recreational planning.
And I would want to see the, who's all on that and make sure that each one of the.
I think we would appoint them. Yeah, Doug, is that kind of the way that kind of an advisory group would be?
I would agree.
We would appoint them. They would bring recommendations to us, and then we would point them. They sent us an email that had their recommendations for the type of people that were on that board.
Okay.
But this is more a year-round group, right? It's not just winter.
No, this would be, yeah, big picture.
So we would, could take someone like the chairman from Winter Rec, someone from Waterways, someone from Snowmobile, and put them all together as a group?
Zumba Citra.
But we still don't have much summer rep. We need somebody from rafting, somebody from.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to identify every single user group. I think we look at like people who represent different user groups. But it was more like, you know, City McCall, City of Donnelley, if they want to be a part, Cascade, and then, you know, different members of the community that have interest in recreation. So that we just end up with a broad-based coalition. I don't remember what their recommended number of members were. I mean, generally, it's like, you know, maybe seven to nine people. But based on, you know, the Boise model that we've been talking about with the Foothills Collaborative is, you know, there's agency, there's government, and then there's citizen representation.
So what would be the purpose of this overall group?
Well, I think.
That's what I'm trying to get straight in my mind.
I think the big picture, the first priority would be to look at the IDL lands. You know, we just signed an MOU with United Payette to start moving forward on their lease. They're working on finalizing the lease with Larry right now for the IDL lands with Department of Lands in McCall. And then, once we have that secured, you know, do we want to apply for some grants to start doing some infrastructure upgrades like bathrooms and parking lots? You know, do we want to apply for other funds for conservation easements or things like that? I mean, there's, as far as I'm concerned, it's wide open right now. But I think that we need a group of people to help us, you know. Do we want to start looking at like a green belt along the Payette River? You know, whatever we want to start doing right now is like, I think we need somebody to help us prioritize those things.
And our strategic, our in-house strategic planning group made that a priority in this next year to create this recreation planning group because recreation is so critical to our infrastructure and our long-term financial health to Valley County. So that recommendation actually came out of that strategic planning group to create this recreation strategic plan.
It was, as I say, hand in hand with the IDL discussions from last year even.
Yeah. And in my mind, the strategic plan is what is our five-year plan for recreation? What is our 25-year plan for recreation? And then identify funding mechanisms that may be available, but also identify the, the regional, you know, what, what do the citizens that live here want to see from our recreation program as we move forward? So host some meetings.
Jenny Blate, the district ranger in McCall, has expressed the same interest. She would like to see a collaborative approach to, you know, what they're working on as well as what we're working on, what IDL is working on, so that we're bringing all these different things into play instead of just, you know, somebody over here doing this job at the Forest Service and.
Somebody doing that at the county, I think. You know, having that, I really would think that this would be a huge support to Larry, you know, when he has an idea about yours. You put it out there to this recreation planning board and go, hey, this is my idea. Let everybody go out and research it, find out what works, what doesn't work, and then it's either an up or down. County spends money on it or we don't.
So are you saying then that Larry would kind of be the coordinator of this group?
Absolutely, yes.
And I'm just trying to decide if that's going to happen.
I think he would be a member. I don't know if he would be a, because he doesn't have any jurisdiction on Forest Service lands. So I mean, to me, it's.
Be a collaborative, yeah.
Yeah, it's an equal representation board.
But as far as the county's representation on it, he would definitely be engaged with that conversation.
He'd have to be because it's a county initiative, I would assume.
Yeah.
But I'm, yeah, I'm trying to think like, with Dave saying, how do we bring in state guys, Forest Service guys?
Yeah, they're already, they're already discussing this. And it's, you know, I think, again, going back to the model of the, excuse me, the, I'm blanking, sorry, the Foothills groups in Boise. That's Ada County, that's Boise City, that's BLM, Forest Service. There's recreation interests that are involved in that, that collaborative. And they look at what are our needs for, you know, growing foothill demand. Do we want more motorized? We want more non-motorized? We need bathrooms at this trailhead? Do we want to procure land for this area? You know, do we want easements? Do we want pathways? What, what are we looking for? And so, again, I think it's just having a group of people that are engaged in Valley County with the government and agency representatives. And the way that that board is set up, I think I've sent that information to you last year, was the way that that board is set up is it's an equal representation board. There's not a, you know, chair that's, you know, appointed by somebody that's final say on everything or coordinator, I guess. But, you know, it just runs like all of our other advisory boards would be run.
So there would be a chair set up, though?
I'm just wondering.
Well, you would have to have a chair, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just wondering if Larry's capable of doing this.
It's a time issue. And I think right now, I think the funding available is unlike anything we've ever seen before with the money that's coming down the pipe. And if we don't start jumping on this, we're going to start losing opportunities for it. There's five-year funding right now that's out there.
And that was the whole position that was created, was to do this work. So if you look at the job description that was created, there's now been put up until spring, it was specifically for resource allocation, looking for grants, looking for financial support for our recreation department.
That's why I say I don't know if Larry's able to do this.
And that's why he was provided the opportunity to hire somebody that would.
I don't know if Danny could do it.
He's got to hire another person. There's no way that these guys have time right now to do what they're doing. So we have to get another position, another person in place that has the skill set.
I was going to say, and it might be that it's one of us that's going to be on that board representing the county's interests right now.
Yeah.
And we pass along the, you know, where the county's going. Obviously, our recreation department is going to have to be heavily involved with this group. But if there's not, you know, a direct connection to them, then it has to be one of the three of us, I would think. I don't know, you know, I have to look back again at the makeup of the Ada County or the group down the foothills and see if they have electeds on there or not.
I'm just wondering if maybe we're trying to take too big of a bite here. We've got a Winter Rec Forum group. Maybe we need to just do a Summer Rec group. I'm just throwing out ideas here because I think we're going to overwhelm.
So.
Right off the bat, nothing's going to happen.
Right. Winter Rec Forum is not, it's not one of our boards. It's a group that the Forest Service has put together. It's more along the lines of, you know, Land Allocation Committee. It's not an official group. It's a advisory group to, like the Boise Forest Coalition or the PFC. So they're making some recommendations, you know, on what they'd like to see happen. And I think in this case, we're looking for a group that's slightly more organized than that. We're looking for an advisory committee that's, you know, set up through the county, but with other members of other agencies.
I know, when I go to the Idaho Rec Council, which is kind of a state level, what we're trying to create here, they have, people come and go. It's not heavily attended sometimes. Sometimes you get everybody there, just depending if there's food and all that stuff, I think. I just don't want to create something that is going to fail right off the bat because we don't have.
So let me, let me, let me find the email from United Payette and Larry that they've been working on with the MOU. And it pretty clearly defines what roles they're looking for on that group. Let's just table that for now.
Yeah, get it to us. And then also the stuff on Midas, we haven't seen that.
No, that was.
We're supposed to comment on that, too.
That's everything down on my list right here.
I don't want to do something that's, we need the right person for it. I don't think we have the right person.
Well, again, we've given the opportunity to find the right person. So that's what management's about, is building your team underneath of you to accomplish the tasks. And that's what we've provided. And I'm looking at like skill sets, Dave. But if I were to put somebody on that strategic planning group, it would be you because you have such a recreation background and all of the other things that you're doing are recreation-based.
I agree. And I think there's a good reason to keep that grouping together because, you know, with Forest Coalition.
He doesn't have, you know, as much responsibility. Like, what would you be willing to give up? What about the perpetua, you know, the Stednight Gold thing?
Yeah, I'd be willing to take some of that stuff on. And I just don't want you guys to burn yourselves out because it happens.
Looking at skill sets, you know, and each one of those, you know, that we all have our own skill sets that we're utilizing. Yours is definitely recreation-based. You oversee the recreation department. You do everything that's recreation-based in this boards. So I don't know if there's something that you want to give up.
I don't feel like I have a lot. I mean, the way that the meetings stagger, I don't feel like I'm overwhelmed with meetings, so.
Okay.
See, and most of mine, I got to drag to Boise, you know, our normal meetings. So it's, it's a day-long deal, so.
Yeah.
As I say, I actually feel like some of the things that you're on take up more time than most of these.
If I had to give one up, it would be the magistrate commission. Because I'm not real fond of interviewing people for a job. Doug's on it now, so we have somebody from Valley County on it.
But maybe some of these other ones. So like.
And honestly, Sherri, I feel like you're the right person for the Fair Board.
And I agree. And I've spent enough time and energy now to, you know, to really dig deeper, to fix some things there.
How would you guys feel about waiting until we get this person on in the spring in the rec department before we start this?
But it's already been started, though. That's the problem.
The process is already rolling. That's one of the things Larry's been working with United Payette on that. And so what we're looking for now is, I think, a supplemental group to work somewhat independently to continue the work, you know, to continue moving forward on it.
We have kind of like a mission statement, what's the function?
I think we have all that.
If you do, that would be great to see. Because I don't, you know, do we need the Raptors on there? Do we need, you know, the schools on there for their recreation? How big?
Yeah, I think you're just getting, I think you're looking at it too, too small scale. And it's more of a big picture.
More of a larger thing, okay.
So, but there's two sides of that? Because you're looking at a big picture, but our strategic planning group is wanting something specific to Valley County. What is our growth? And so I think that we need to have a holistic conversation about, you know, what the United Payette was specifically designed for was the IDL grounds. We will see if they are willing to look at the valley as, as a holistic.
I've asked, I've asked Larry to have that conversation with him.
Okay, and we haven't heard back.
I have not heard back.
Okay, so that's, again, one of the things that's kind of a loose end out there right now. And we've asked Larry to create a strategic planning committee. And so that's, whether that group could function as that, or whether it is a separate strategic planning committee. Because we're doing strategic planning for the county as a whole. I mean, our strategic plan is very vibrant. Doug's been in a lot of that, and he can attest to that. We have some great goals that are coming up, and that's one of them. And our, our looking at the future and preparing for a downturn in the market up here, all revolves around recreation.
But let's say this group came out and said, okay, we want to purchase two or three more campground sites somewhere.
I think they would have also the opportunity to like, say, where are those cited? You know, what scale are we looking at? Is there a property, is there a property that we can use right now? Or is there a property that we need to acquire? Is there grant money available for those acquisitions?
And my concern is, okay.
And they would bring those recommendations.
And Larry will do it. And I don't think Larry can do that part.
No, no. And I don't think that that would be the expectation from that group. Now, they might come back and say, do you have a grant writer that could go out and write grants for these? And, you know, we would need to determine if Mary had the time to do that or not. But Larry needs to be a part of that conversation or a recreation person. That, again, that position was designed to be on that board or that focus of energy was.
I've got the email. Let me send it to you guys. Like I said, I'd say we just review the information that we already have, that we've already asked for these guys to create. And table that for now.
And to me, it's, honestly, to me, it's a timing issue. I think we can do it, but I don't think this is the right time just yet, until we get the right people in there.
Well, they're in the process of working through that. I mean, that's.
I was talking to Pat, too. I think we're getting close, maybe another year or so, of taking on a second grant writer. I mean, that's part-time, full-time, I don't know yet. But I think Mary is, is putting in the hours. And we have to talk to her and see how she feels about it, but.
I, I could see our recreation planner position that we asked for being, and that was part of the job description, was to help facilitate recreational grant writing. But, you know, I mean, obviously, any grant that we write, we want to have that go through Mary as well.
She would be like a supervisor over them, but I think we're going to have to bolster that staff here in another year or two because we're going to burn her up.
Well, like, you know, I mean, for instance, the city of McCall, when they want a grant written, they don't have a grant writer that writes the grant. They have the department head that writes the grant. Like Kurt Wolf has written all the recreation grants for the city of McCall. I don't know if he has somebody else that reviews those with him, but.
Delta does all the federal grant writing.
Same with the Parks and Recs, or the park side is, anything that they want to do, like their waterways improvement.
He does all of it.
He's written all of those.
Oh, there used to be a gal out there that did a lot of grants from McCall. I can't think of her name.
Earl Quell.
Delta.
She retired, but there was another one.
Delta James does it all. She does their federal. She does a lot of the.
She used to be down here.
Yeah, no, that's what I was going to say is, I think that was the intent of that position as well, is that they're writing, you know, grants for recreation specifically.
Absolutely.
And that could, that could cover waterways. I mean, that, that's grooming, that's other sorts of recreation, whether it's, again, acquisition.
Okay, we better move on with this committee thing and get this done.
Idaho Association of Counties, I'm on the transportation one, and the intergovernmental one. Elton's on the public health. Dave's on public lands. We have a meeting coming up at the end of the year. Nobody's on any NACO committees that I know of. The All-Hazard Mitigation Committee, I've been on that. Do you want to take that one on?
Sure, I can take it back on. They're pretty well done now. For what, five years?
Well, yes and no.
They have to update. You know, that's one, one reason why we hired one is so that he could keep track of all that stuff and get that stuff done.
So that's going to be a whole big project this year, though, because they have hired the team from out of Boise that's going to be working on the emergency operations plan.
That was all done.
So it's not quite done. However, this new group out of Boise is going to take our emergency operations plan and, and do a lot of public input on the FEMA side of things and how it impacts not only physical infrastructure, but social infrastructure when there is a FEMA event.
Okay, so I can take that one on if you want me to.
That'd be great.
So Doug, put me in under All-Hazard Mitigation.
Dave, you're on the U of I Advisory Board. I'm still on the V Corp.
He's on the U of I Advisory because it has you.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, he took that one over.
I think they took it over when I took that as the department.
Hey, you got that one, Doug?
Got it.
And the Valley County Opioid Response Project, I have been the one that's engaged the most. I have not been able to engage very much. El, if you're interested at all.
Yeah, I can.
They have a very vibrant committee there.
I know that the, the health districts are coming up with some plans for some of that funding. So if you want to stay on this one, and then I'll stay on the, the district level one, and hope the two of us together, we can get some money coming this way.
I will stay on that.
State of Idaho Boards.
I am on a State of Idaho Appointed Commission. That's probably your magistrate, I'll move that magistrate commission underneath that, too, because that's an appointed board. I'm on that workforce development board.
And that was through the governor, right?
Yes. And then I'm on that, I've been appointed to the Southwest Idaho RAC.
Oh, yeah, that's a good one to be on.
That's one that I'd love to be on. But like I said, I, you know, I think they have a conflict because some of the funds could be projects that I would ask for money on.
Okay. And I've already been approved because I had my application in like three to five years ago and.
You have been approved? You actually got?
I have been, yeah.
Good, because they weren't doing that for a while.
They changed everything in that last legislation.
Okay, what else?
So and then the only things I want to add at the bottom, Doug, and I can send you this, but I'd like to put on the in-house committees that have been established now. So the Road Advisory Committee, Strategic Planning, Campus Planning are all in-house committees. So that Road Advisory Committee does meet, and they follow all open meeting laws. So I don't know, Elliot, you've kind of expressed interest in that. I don't know if you want to take that one. So I don't know, Elt, you've kind of expressed interest in that. I don't know if you want to take that one on. The only thing about that one is I run all of the.
Minutes?
No, well, Mary Rosen records the minutes for us, but I have to turn on all the cameras and everything to record it.
Yeah, that's above my pay grade.
It's not that hard.
I'm sure I can screw it up.
Well, and you can always.
I can't take it on if you, if you, if you want to pass it.
And so if we look at the areas that we oversee, whoever oversees the road department should be on that Road Advisory Committee. So we need to look at all of those, and those are not on the agenda today. So we can maybe discuss that, you know, moving forward.
Yeah, what do you want to do that, Doug, next week?
You guys tell me.
Yeah, let's put that on the agenda next week for.
To oversee the division.
Department head selections or whatever you want to call it.
Okay. And then the strategic planning, I'm still on that one. We're almost done with that. There are some other things that we.
Commissioner, are you staying on the Road Advisory Committee?
For now. Another one, the Campus Planning Committee, I would like to start that one. Just, I asked to start it, so that's up to you guys on if you want somebody else to do that one.
Well, I think you'd be good for that.
We also have the CIP Committee, which hopefully in year two, it's going to flow pretty smoothly. And I'm happy to, you know, stay on that one, or if somebody else is interested in that, we can do that. But I would like to add those, those four on there because they're very big-time commitments.
Okay, are we good? We got to move on. Of course, we're going to have plenty of time, I guess, for an summary.
Could you send me the updates on that? I altered my mind, but I didn't alter it correctly.
I will do that. And it's good to have this out there just to show people, you know, Doug, I wonder if this should be on the website somewhere. Just so people can see who's engaged and why and reach, be able to reach out for that type of thing, I don't know. Now, I'm going to put your magistrate commission under state boards since that is an elected position. So then we know in the future how that needs to be.
It's actually an appointment by the governor, and I don't know the, can't remember the process, but I think you have to put your name in for it.
So does each one of the counties have a representative on there?
Yes. And it's one of the few times I see a Boise County Commissioner.
Okay.
Okay, we're good? I'm going to go find out if we have any.
We do.
We do? In adjutant? Okay, so then the next agenda item we have, if we're good here?
Do you want to have a?
Oh, do we need a motion?
It's, it's on as an action item.
Yep, you're right. So at this time, I would make a motion, I'll make the motion that we approve the decisions for assignment to the Valley County Board of County Commissioners or to committees and boards as presented.
One second.
Move in second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, our next item is an action item. This is an executive session for Inadjutant and Charity, Pareto Quote 74 206 1D. Do I have that motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Moved in second by roll call, please.
Hang him and I.
Pop and I.
Hasbrouck, I and Doug will be in at 11:20.